Say one thing which struck me very significantly over the last week was without disparaging our neighbors to the north. To see a boil water advisory that does not apply to Union Bay was an amazing experience. Just to say that.
Yes.
Our water quality and our water plant handled significant turbidity. And I won't say very well, I know our team worked very hard to make sure that it that water quality continued and that we didn't have a boil water advisory. But it's a testament to the quality of what we've installed and the quality of the people that are running it. So that would be my opening remark. And then if anybody unless anybody else has any opening remarks, I'll just move on with the agenda. Susanna, by the way, are you at home these days?
Uh, no, I'm not home right now.
You're over in Vancouver. I just have your book that I keep forgetting to return and I wanted to ask you.
Right.
Yeah. So let's move on with the agenda then approval of the agenda, any late items? I'll just leave it over to the to the group to say, is there anything you'd like to comment on add to delete? All good? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I shall move.
Second? Second from Susanna and all in favor, I will just go around Susanna.
Eve? Yes.
Ted?
I.
Ian? Yes, okay, sorry, it's awkward on video to record our votes.
Thank you this year.
Yes, when Eve did also acknowledge. So adoption of the minutes from the December third Cow meeting. Any changes additions corrections whatever that we might need for these minutes? Okay, then can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor Ted?
I'm in favor.
Eve?
In favor.
Susanna?
I.
Ian, I, okay, so we are now on to the first of the new business items, which would be a water treatment plant office. Verbal status update and discussion for board input and I will turn the floor over to our interim administrator Gary Nathan.
Good afternoon, all happy new year.
New year.
Happy new year to each of you. Hope your weather has been a little bit better than it has been down in Victoria. It's been interesting to say the least and I know you guys have had your challenges up there as well. For this first item, I'm actually going to ask Janice to lead this one. Janice and I have had a number of discussions. And she's shared with me some information in regards to proposals or quotes that we've received for an office facility at the water treatment plant as well as quotations for fencing. Up around that area. We do not have a recommendation to present at this time. I'm actually going to be in Union Bay, I'm coming up there on Wednesday and Thursday to meet with the fire chief, the public work superintendent and also staff and get a tour of, of, you know, a lot of the facilities related to this particular project and others. So we are certainly, I see myself in a position to develop a bit more of a strategy in terms of how to address some of these issues moving forward. And to present recommendations, but I'm just going to ask Janice, I've asked her to give you a brief update where we're at, what we've done to this point and to get any input and answer any questions that you may have. Janice?
So we have been working on trying to secure an office for the water treatment plant for a while. And there was one opportunity with an independent person, they would they had an a you a mobile unit. And it was presented as an opportunity and it was quite a good deal. It was about forty eight thousand dollars, but it's not available yet and it probably won't be available for quite some time. So it's not really a very viable choice. So then we went out and priced at a number of different places, they're very hard to come by, you can't just find an Atco trailer. Anymore like the trailer that Danny uses for his office was, I think, a two thousand dollar trailer, it can't be moved, it will fall apart. So that's been part of the the problem, so some of the quotes that Danny has received, one is for around eighty seven thousand dollars. And then another quote at a different company, it's ninety six thousand dollars, so that is the spec to the same for both of them, yeah, that's what they cost. So we weren't even looking at pricing out having one built due to permitting. You know, you'd have to go through quite a different process. Rather than having a unit pre-built and moved on to a slab. So this was the more efficient way of doing it, Danny did look at. He compared the prices and timelines and this seemed like the better option, so that's your up to date, so basically what we were talking about with the fencing, you guys will notice that the old trailer, that's Danny's office halfway up McLeod. The fence was knocked down, I'm not sure at what point it was knocked down. But he's had issues with people trying to break into the trailer, that's where the computers are. They've put cameras out, a GoPro to try and catch whoever was doing it, they stole the GoPro. So that site has to be restored to its natural original situation. And and I believe Ian, you were saying five years from when the water treatment agreement was signed, which was twenty seventeen. So it's coming. So Danny had priced out getting a fence put back up at that site. And it's over three thousand dollars, so it kind of didn't make a whole lot of sense to put more money into that site. So so we're trying to move forward with an office and we get an office, we're going to save fifteen hundred a month on the trailer rental. That's serving as a bathroom break kitchen, it's not set up. It's it's not big enough to be used as an office and storage. So and we will only have that till probably May or June. So that's sort of the logic behind the office. Do you have any questions?
I do, but I'll defer. Eve, Eve, do you have a question?
Yeah, in that trailer, did they have a bathroom? I don't even know.
Yes.
I don't remember, so there's, so is it like a pump out? Or is it a little septic thing there?
No, what they have right now is it has to be pumped out.
Eve, was your question?
Are you talking about Danny's old office?
I'm talking about the trailer.
The trailer has a bathroom, that's initially why we got it.
And it's pump out?
Yes.
Okay. And and is any, what, just one more question is for the for the water treatment plant, you're you're you want an office for there, right? Right there?
Correct.
Have you, since trailers are so expensive, how about a travel trailer, a giant travel? You can get them all day long for ten thousand, fifteen thousand.
They they're just not built to be permanently used, that's the problem.
Yeah, right.
They're old, they can't withstand wear and tear.
If you want a permanent site, then it sounds like it's going to be.
It's permanent, yeah, because the other issue with having an office up there is it's also used. You know, part of it will be used for storage, for parts, secure storage and a workshop.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Ted or Susanna?
Go ahead, Susanna, I'll talk out.
Thank you. Um, I'm just confused here, we're talking really about two trailers, correct? One is on the old property that needs to be moved, one is we're renting already.
Correct.
So we need to be clear about which two we're talking about. So I'm going to talk about the old trailer that needs to be removed anyway from halfway up McLeod. Right, am I correct on that? So it makes sense to me to, since it has to be moved anyway, to at least try to move that trailer.
We are doing that.
Okay, you didn't say that, okay.
Sorry, let's let's clarify that, Janice, are you attempting to move Danny's old trailer to the new plant?
Yeah, okay, we can call that the shop, because that's what he refers to it as the shop. Yes, he's looked into getting it moved and again, it has no bathroom, it has no kitchen. It would only serve as a storage and an workshop. But he's also been told that it, they're ninety eight percent sure it will fall apart. It it almost fell apart when it was moved to the site at that now, so they're still going to try and move it. Because it's got to be moved anyways. So again, it can be moved up to the water treatment plant, but it still can't be used as an office.
Correct, and what are we paying for renting the trailer that does have a bathroom and can be used as an office?
Fifteen hundred a month and it can't be used as an office, it's not big enough to use as an office.
Why? If the trailer can be used as the workshop and storage, well, how big is this fifteen hundred dollar a month trailer?
Well, it's a travel trailer, so most of it is bedroom and kitchen and bathroom. So we can't make any physical changes to the travel trailer. So it's it's not set up to put your desk in to use as an office, it has one little kitchen table where they eat their lunch at and have their breaks at. And it's temporary, you know, we can only have it till high season.
So I Sorry, go ahead, Susanna.
Um, I'm a little bit concerned because there's kind of a number of issues at play, for sure, the staff need an office and a bathroom, there's no question about that. I don't understand why that wasn't initially built in the initial plan.
I agree.
Three to me. I don't agree with putting more money like fencing into property that we are going to have to vacate. Also, in less than six months now, we are transitioning to the CBRD, so would not some of the pressure on workshop? Storage, maybe even office? Be in court, it be be shared with CBRD facilities?
No, because they have to have on site, the water treatment plant operators have to be on site. And it makes sense for the workshop office, you know, to be on site.
Well, I'm I'm still hopeful that the old trailer, at least temporarily, could be continued to be used as a workshop and a storage area. This is really, as you, as we all know, we don't have the money for a hundred thousand dollar expenditure, do do we?
Yeah.
We do?
There's five hundred thousand in reserve funds for the public works.
And that was, was that budgeted in our budget that we just passed?
We didn't budget capital.
No.
Just operating.
We have five hundred thousand dollars in our capital reserves for water. Okay. Didn't use that for the loan?
Sorry, Eve, I didn't catch that.
In a meeting, I'm in a meeting.
Let's let Ted speak, he's been waiting.
Yeah.
Yes, again, trailers, there seems to be a shortage in the province or whatever for this particular application. The thing is Alberta has lots of trailers. Oil Patch has lots of trailers, a lot of them are being used, a lot of them are being sold, etc. I don't know if you've been in touch with Ritchie Brothers or any of these outfits that sell a lot of this stuff.
Danny has, yes.
I'd like to look into that, again, I have to agree. We're on a budget, we are going through a transition in the next number of months. It's something that needs to be done, but I don't know if that trailer will make it up the hill in one piece or if it'll be scattered all over as it's moving. I think we should try to move that trailer up first. Before we make a decision on whether we're going to bring in some other trailer to replace it. Again, an office in a rented travel trailer, I guess that, again, you said isn't going to work. Because you can't be putting a bunch of holes into it and everything else because it's being rented. I think the first thing is to move that trailer from the old site and see if it can be brought up and set up storage at the plant. Then we turn around and again, review whether to go ahead with building an office on site, which eventually will have to be done. After we get that trailer moved, so we know exactly what's going on. And then if that's the case, go ahead with it. But I think Alberta has trailers, BC doesn't have many. But Alberta does have trailers that I think can be brought out for a heck of a lot less than that amount of money. Anyhow, that's what I'm going to say for now, I think we need to move that trailer off the other property. See if it can be moved.
So I'd like to add to the discussions so far. I think we need to keep our sort of accumulative facts straight, right? The first is is that the travel or the trailer that we have on the old plant is not adequate for the purposes, whether it makes it or not. It does not have a washroom and it does not have sufficient space for all of our staff.
Yeah, it's just storage.
It it's, it it has some storage sort of shop capability, all those sorts of things. It might mitigate the size of trailer we need, but I don't know if that's option hasn't been explored yet. But the other things that we need to understand is that the working conditions inside the plant where people are working now are probably contrary to WCB regulations. And that they, it is not heated and it is very loud. And so we need to provide a safe working environment for people. We need a washroom, that trailer does not have a washroom. The one, the the old trailer at the the other plant, the travel trailer does not have enough space. And the the last thing I would say is that we need to have a an adequate washroom facility for staff comfort, but also for safety. And I I believe that, you know, in in the interest, making a long term decision where we have an eighteen thousand dollar operational outflow every year. We will find that buying a trailer is probably a long term cost effective solution. As you know, it'll get paid for within five years. Just by the rental charges that come through. I I am in support of doing this, I am also in support of making sure that we've explored all options for adequate used trailers and, you know, I don't want us to be it's it's not our job as the the board to say, do this, do that, check this, check that. What we need to say to the staff is that we want to make sure you've explored all reasonable opportunities, including trailers in Alberta, but there's moving costs to bring them out. But I I do believe that we need to do something for the employees. And what we should be doing is something, I wouldn't call it the minimum, it would be the minimum for their comfortable working environment and the minimum we need for function such as how many offices, bathroom, storage, workshop. And if storage can go to CBRD for some of the stuff, maybe that minimizes what we need. So that's what I would say.
I agree.
Can I?
Yes, Susanna, please.
I agree with what you're saying, for sure, we have to, we have to do something. I find it hard to believe that between, you know, nineteen thousand to a hundred thousand. Would it not be cheaper to build, have we looked at that? To build a permanent structure?
Janice, what do you know about the the research that's been done there?
Yeah, I do know that Danny has spent a fair bit of time looking into it and it it really, there was a big issue with the permitting of putting something on a slab versus actually building something at the site. And that seemed to be why he was leaning towards a ready made unit that could just be brought in, so.
By whom, sorry, permitting by who? What kind of?
District.
They need building permits.
Yeah, building permits.
Okay.
So Danny had looked into that. And so that's why it seemed to, the other way seemed to be more efficient.
Well, and if we look at, how big is that, it's twelve hundred square feet or something, isn't it?
Hang on, I can tell you.
It wasn't large.
At buying, the one, the one, the two that we were looking at buying, are they the same size?
Correct.
And it's about twelve hundred square?
Well, let's let Janice, I'm.
Three hundred and twenty square feet.
Oh, that's all it is, sorry.
Oh, yeah, twelve hundred, that's a house.
Yeah.
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 Question.
So that, so I'm just wondering, sorry, Eve, I just want to finish the thought train I was on there. I, you know, if we look at building costs. It's going to be, given the what's going on in this valley, it's going to be a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks a square foot anyways, right? At least two hundred bucks a square foot, I would guess. And and so now you're at sixty five thousand dollars or something like that and you're at a delay. And I would guess that two hundred dollars a square foot is actually low. So it'd be interesting to know on that if we could actually do it cheaper, right? You'd think that a prefab arrangement would actually be cheaper.
Yeah.
Than custom.
You would think so, I'm I'm wondering, have we asked the school district as well?
Yeah, like Ian Hamm is our fire chief and he works directly for the school district and they there's, they started building their own portables because you can't get them. And also the other issue he did say about the portables that you can buy. They are not well made, like an Atco trailer is not well made.
So I know.
So it doesn't have a huge life to it, so. Yeah.
But now we're thinking of buying an Atco trailer, am I right?
These aren't Atco trailers.
Oh.
No, with, one of the places where the quote came from, you know, the bypass into Courtney?
Yeah.
One of the places that makes them is right there, they're very well made units. So.
So this, the the other question I had was more along, okay, so this was to be a discussion and inputs from from the the board back to the staff in terms of what we're thinking. And and so I'm guessing that the next steps are that a proposal will be brought forward or and a bylaw associated with it, do we have, Gary, can you fill us in on what that is, the next steps?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is, this has been really good for me because when Janice shared these quotes. You know, I just wasn't comfortable that I could see, you know, what the next step may be. Because there's, as most of you have mentioned, all of the issues that certainly were on my list, there's a number of issues here, right? There's procurement issues, there's budget issues potentially, although this would be funded, I guess, from from a reserve, there's work safe operational issues. And there's, as Susanna has mentioned, there's the whole issue of the conversion process and and I just was not comfortable at this point in time that we have necessarily explored all the other options, maybe we have. But the first thing I want to do is get myself up there. View all these, you know, go to the water treatment plant site, see the, see the plant. See what's up there now, see this, this working trailer. And get a better handle on what the stack, the next step, step may be moving forward. Because it's clearly something that needs to be addressed, notwithstanding conversion. But, you know, it's it's potentially something that I would see raising in the context of that process as early as the eleventh. But I got to get a better handle of where we're at in terms of this right now. So definitely what I would see happening is, once I can get my head around this and talk to Dan and talk to Janice further and and, you know, get a better idea of what's, what the work that's been done to date. I'd see us coming back to the board with setting out some options and a recommendation on how to move forward.
And when do you think that would happen?
As soon as possible.
Think it's this this board cycle in January or is it a February?
Oh, it would be probably a February item.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
And do we know the timeline for delivery of one of these trailers if we were to go down that road?
I'm sure Danny knows, but I do not.
Because that's part of the decision here is will we be able to have a new trailer before we need to lose the old trailer?
Yeah.
The rental.
Meaning the one that.
Rental trailer, yeah.
Right.
Absolutely, I see it as being time sensitive. Because one of the things that I'm concerned and and you folks have identified it is there is a work safe issue here too as well, right? So I certainly see it as being time sensitive.
But any further comment from any of the board members on this? I I I'm I'm in favor of the approach that Gary's recommending in terms of, you know, doing his research, doing the reviews, bringing back options and recommendations as soon as possible.
I have a question.
Eve?
So are you going to explore all possibilities or just possibilities amongst trailers? In other words, building a place rather than just trailers?
Well, I think it's worth talking to Danny about it, Gary, because Danny has investigated that, so you know, you can get more information from Danny, so just so you know, the plumbing has already, the pipes are already in. The electrical is already in, so a septic would have to be finalized. And he has talked to someone, a septic has to be done either way, so he has got someone ready to do the septic. So other than that, the site is is ready, except for foundation, obviously.
My understanding was that we were going to put the outflow, the sewage from that trailer into the sludge tank that gets extract. I thought it would, it would go in there because it's going to the sewage plant anyways for.
No, it would go into septic.
Oh, I I remember the discussion saying it would go into that tank at one point.
Yeah, I don't, I think when the guy pumps it out. He will also pump the trailer out, when he pumps the sludge out, he pumps the trailer out, but I I don't recall Danny.
It'd be worth exploring because if we have something that is being pumped out to go to the sewage treatment plant anyways, why would we need a septic field?
I believe this is what Danny's been talking about, he believes at some point they will, especially when the conversion happens, they will be more agreeable for the sludge to go to the dump. Which is fifty dollars versus a thousand.
Makes a difference, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He said there has to be a septic field, that's what Danny said.
So that increases the cost. So that increases the cost.
Septic is hugely expensive. Putting in a septic field.
There has to be one anyway, you said, right? To Gary Nason, and I haven't heard the answer yet, are you gonna explore the poss- all of the routes, especially building from scratch?
Absolutely, and, and the question, you know, the first question I'm going to ask Dan is what options have been explored? You know.
And, and do they even have a, a, a square footage requirement? Or are they just going with, well, we'll get a trailer and they come at a certain size, so we'll make do? Do they have a plan for how many?
He has a plan.
And how many do they need?
How many?
Square feet?
Danny has a plan, he's drawn it out. So he, he literally, he's drawn it out what the needs are, so.
And you don't, can't say the square feet on that? I can't really read it.
Uh, well, I believe because they quoted on three twenty, it was three twenty.
Okay, so he's just looking at trailers, basically, okay.
Well, yeah, it's not actually, it's, it's a modular building, I, I, I don't think it's a trailer.
Okay, a modular.
Differently, right?
They're better than trailers, modulars.
They, they're. Homes, you know, it's quality of a home.
Okay, thank you.
So that means we're not even looking at used, this is new.
Let's leave this to Gary, I think we've, we've got a set of information, Gary's going to um, do due diligence on, on the process and bring back her options and recommendations.
Yep, leave it, leave it with us, I'll certainly do that, and this feedback from the board has been good. Uh, I've got a better sense in terms of what the, what uh, the options are that you'd like us to look at and the timeframe issues and um, um, thanks very much for that feedback.
Can we close this one off?
Uh, one thing I'd like to add. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like him to add, uh, I think that we should also talk to Daniel Arbor regarding if you go ahead with a structure rather than a trailer regarding the permits and uh, time that it would take for the regional district to issue permits. If we go ahead with a building instead. Because there seems to be a holdup in permits with the regional district. And if there's gonna be that much of a holdup with permits with the regional district, I can't, don't think we have a choice except the trailer or something that's built to be brought in. I think that question should be asked of the regional district. It only took us four months to get permits for building the actual water treatment plant, so why would it take so long to get permits to put up a structure?
Well, let's just ask the question, but go ahead, Susanna, I just, I don't want to debate it.
No, no, I don't want to debate it either, I, I, I agree with uh, that question needs to be asked and just, I can speak to building because I built a carriage house and the permitting was actually quite fast. I can warn you though. Uh, we are under earthquake rules, which are uh, you know, rightly, we're in an earthquake zone, which are relatively new, which do add to the building costs. In my case, it added significantly because the bottom garage was not earthquake proofed. Now, we're talking about perhaps a new build, so that would not be an issue. I just wanted to say though, that the permitting was actually quite fast for, for, from my building experience. That was just last, in the last six months.
Any other final comments, or shall we move on?
Move on.
Move on.
All right. Next item, uh, proposed Ubid Board Senior Staff Strategic Planning Priorities. Um, setting session, so basically a strategic planning session is on the agenda to be discussed here and um, Gary has been driving this, uh, so I'd like to turn it over to him to describe what he is proposing and then we can figure out when, if and when we want to do this.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, um, y- yeah, one of the things that uh, I'd like to suggest to the board eh, that you consider um, as soon as possible, really. Even if conversion wasn't taking place, but particularly in view of the fact that we're the train has left the station now in terms of the conversion process, but one of the things I'd like to suggest is that we have a, kind of a mini little strategic planning priority session um, sometime as soon as possible um, in January or early February. Uh, there's been a number of things that have been raised uh, since uh, since I've been uh, working with you folks. There's a number of issues that we've been talking about in terms of potentially moving forward, just a few to just a few examples, the two thousand seventeen subdivision bylaw, updating our capital expenditure charges, which was last done in two thousand fourteen. Developing a five-year uh, capital expenditure plan, which uh, to my understanding, we don't really have in a in a formal sense, there's been discussion about adding the B parcels to the tax roll. Uh, initiating collection action against, you know, delinquent tolls and taxes and charges. Settling ponds for peat sludge. And the boundary of the treatment plant, a number of these issues that I think it would be worthwhile uh, discussing eh, separate from a, a board meeting and separate from a cow meeting, but in a, a little mini strategic planning session, I know you folks have had, had, had them in the past, I'm not sure when the last one was. There's also a number, when you read the conversion study, as you, as you know, probably better than I do. The conversion study made, make reference to a number of things that it suggested uh, Ubid should undertake, again, even if conversion wasn't going to take place, things like a water master plan, uh, a long-term fire hall and equipment plan. Um, Langley Lake Dam condition assessment and review of the Langley Lake Dam policies and procedures. Uh, and a water system inventory. So, um, really what I'm suggesting is we have one of these sessions, uh, maybe book out two and a half to three hours. Um, and uh, you know, as soon as we can um, fit it into everyone's timetable. I would suggest that, I don't think it needs to be facilitated by an external consultant or anyone like that. Um, we bring a number of these issues, I would certainly bring these issues that I've mentioned to the table. Other trustees would be welcome to bring any other issues. And we get into a bit of a prioritize, a prioritized session in terms of what things to undertake. Um, you know, in two thousand twenty-one. And um, i- it, it would be um, maybe a two and a half, three-hour session. I have no uh, issues with it being uh, an open meeting. Um, open to the public, if the public wanted to log in, if it's gonna be done via Zoom. But with strategic planning sessions, usually um, these are sessions where the public is maybe uh, welcome to observe and listen. But it's really a session for the board and for staff. And um, but again, I have, for transparency reasons, totally comfortable with, with it being a, a, a public kind of a session. And um, I, I would recommend that, just in addition to myself, that Janice, Ian and um, uh, Danny be in attendance for this discussion. Cause, you know, a number of these issues cross into their areas of expertise. So, uh, that's what I'm looking for really, is, is there willingness uh, for the board to um, to, to participate and have one of these sessions, and when could we have it that would fit everyone's timetable?
I, I'm sure people have comments, so I'll, I'll start with Ted.
Well, if this session should happen, I guess we should have it happen before our next board meeting. That's the case, uh, we should all get together and uh, have that session as soon as possible. That's, that's what I say to it.
Is it possible we've already scheduled it next Tuesday? I have four, I have meeting in my book, I must have done that wrong, we haven't already scheduled this next week, have we? Cause I have a meeting scheduled with the board on the twelfth. That's not a meeting, no, is it? Am I wrong?
I believe that's when we have our CVRD working committee meeting is on the twelfth.
That's right.
Oh, I must have accidentally thought that was. Our board meeting's on the twenty-first. So if we wanna have it before, that's the week of the eleventh, and I'm, I'm okay with Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, as long as it's, you know, a time I can do, but Monday's not good for me.
Susanna?
Um, I completely agree with this meeting needs to happen, so many of those items, in fact, are budget, they're financial, they have financial impact uh, to the benefit of Union Bay, so I think they're critically important and I appreciate Gary keeping a, a running record uh, of all the issues that, like the settling ponds, the boundary of the treatment plant. These are issues and questions that have been raised over the last six months that really have not been clearly addressed, so I'm all in favor, I'll, I'll switch things around so I can make whatever meeting uh, is set up.
Okay, thank you. I'm all in favor of doing this, but the thing that I would emphasize from what Gary said is that the purpose of the meeting is prioritization. Um, and while there's gonna be a lot of important things listed, I do not believe we'll have the resources to accomplish them all. And, and the reason for that is, conversion is going to consume a lot of resources. There's gonna be a lot of information flow and requirements uh, to, to make sure that conversion happens smoothly. Um, so the, the key purpose of that meeting should be for us to prioritize what comes first. Um, and I don't wanna, you know, even start that process now. Um, but I do believe that when we're finished with it, um, we're gonna say, okay, there's gonna be things that fall off the bottom of the list that have to be left to post-conversion and to CVRD's, for CVRD to handle, we may be able to leave some initial direction to them as to this is our intent. But we won't necessarily be able to process all of them.
No. I agree, in fact, I see this as going back to the advisory committee, which I know we're gonna talk about in a, in a minute, kind of a, a wish list of what the board, Union Bay Board in its last few remaining months uh, hopes, you know, what we wanna see for the future, you know, for Union Bay and uh, and its residents. Several of them, the ones all to do with subdivision are really timely because as we know, we have several development applications in the wings. Uh, so I, I feel very strongly that we need to get those items in order and up to date, so that we're not, uh, so that we are uh, so that we are
Yeah, let's save that for the session, but I appreciate that as input as well. Um, so I think what we need to do is give Gary direction as to when are we available, is it next week? Gary, when, when are you thinking we should do this?
Mr. Chairman, I, I was originally thinking that we would do it i- in the last week of January uh, after the, um, after the board meeting of the twenty-first. Um, really, and that was primarily because, you know, looking at my calendar, I'm gonna be up there next week on Wednesday, Thursday, and hopefully meeting everyone and getting a good lay of the land. And then, you know, there's uh, we, we would have to get that board meeting agenda uh, prepared on the fifteenth and send it out, you know, on the eighteenth and then it's the twenty-first, right? So I was, I was really thinking after um, the board meeting, that, that, the week of the twenty-fifth of January, I don't think it's critical that it happens before the next board meeting, but having said that, um, if uh, if there really is a strong appetite to ha- to do it before the next board meeting, what about Friday the fifteenth? And I'll just ask Janice, um, you know, would that be problematic in terms of I know it's not your regular working day, Janice, but would that be problematic for Dan and for Ian and
Danny normally works Fridays, so not a problem. Um, Ian, i- it's a bit of a different issue because he has to, you know, juggle his schedule.
But does he need time to do that?
That was my, yeah, that was my other consideration is enough advance notice to people. I could certainly do it on the fifteenth.
So if the fifteenth is one option, what's another? The week after, the, sorry, the last week of the month then, right? And, and so.
Final week, the week of January twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I know for myself, it would be Tuesday afternoon, Thursday or Friday is when I could do it. I, I could do it Monday morning as well, but that's probably a tough day, tough time to do it.
Tuesday the twenty-sixth?
In the afternoon only for me.
Rest of the board, would they be okay the afternoon of Tuesday the twenty-sixth?
I'm okay with that.
And the fifteenth, we would do it, what, Friday morning?
Again, morning or afternoon? That's a Friday, though. That may be a little bit more problematic.
Yeah, I think it's harder on the staff, right? Especially Friday afternoon.
I feel more comfortable with the Tuesday so that I could give Ian and, and Dan enough heads up and Janice, you're okay for the Tu- uh, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
I will have a Zoom meeting at five thirty, but we should be done by then.
We'll make sure we're done.
Okay, so let, let's plan for Tuesday afternoon. Um, maybe one to four.
One to four.
Tuesday the twenty-sixth, one to four. And I can set that up.
Ted, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And by all means, feel free to email me. Um, I've mentioned a number of, of uh, things that I would bring forward and put on the table. Feel free to, and I would encourage you to email me with any other uh, items that you see with see warranting a discussion in terms of putting on, on the plate for, for two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
I got a question there, the thing that Miss Susanna is bringing up about the subdivision bylaw that we're needing to look at or improve or get going, when are we dealing with that?
At this, at this planning session would be, you know, a prioritization of it into our work.
Oh, I, I thought we'd already determined that that was a very high priority and that we were going to do it. So we're, we're gonna just prioritize it, okay, at this meeting.
Uh, I could give you a, you know, a counter thought to that, Eve, is, is that CVRD most likely already has a subdivision by law that we have not yet looked at. Right? And, and it, that might be something that we do instead, right? Which is to say, do we need to do subdivision bylaw work, or do we already, are, are we moving into one that suits our purpose? I don't wanna debate that, I'm just saying, hey, there's, there's contrary, yeah, there's contrary positions on that.
Okay, so, I do wanna add to that, please. That would be legwork that I would hope that Gary would do prior to this meeting, we really are running out of time, which is look at what the CDRD subdivision bylaw is. Like, it feels to me like it's being, this was brought up in November and it's now January, and now we're talking the end of January, I just would like to s-
It's not only, we, we're, we're just talking about prioritizing it, not actually doing it.
Well, certainly it would be my intention to, the, the first uh, post-conversion working group meeting is uh, next Monday, I believe, the eleventh. And I certainly wanna raise it in the context of, of that working. And I certainly want to raise it in the context of, of that working group and get a sense of, of what they have in place. I think we're pretty, we're pretty ready to go on it in the sense that we have a bylaw in place and we have the legal opinion from Peter Johnson back in 2017, I guess it was.
Yeah.
And, uh, but there would be a cost to amending that bylaw. And the first thing that I would want to do is just raise it in the context of the working group because you've raised some valid points about what the CVRD may have in place. And, uh, you know, here we are spending a bunch of money and updating a bylaw that would be basically subsumed by, um, a CVRD subdivision bylaw down the road. But I do get the, the point that with, you know, impending developments on the road, Union Bay Estates and, and Upper Island Developments, it does concern me that we have a, a bylaw, a subdivision bylaw that, you know, our own lawyer has, has indicated requires some fairly robust changes. So I would see it as potentially quite high on, on the priority list depending on the CRD's take on this and what I, what I managed to find out through that conversion working group. But, uh, again, you, you know, I, I'm not necessarily saying we prioritize it and then forget about it. It's, you know, the whole issue is there's a number of things that need to be done and a fairly limited amount of time to do them and some limited resources.
Could somebody remind me of what this January 11th or 12th meeting is? I'm sorry, I
CVRD.
But there are several CVRD meetings. There is, which CVRD? Is it the Conversion Advisory Committee meeting or is it the?
Yeah, that's it.
It's the Conversion Working Group, 3:00 to 4:00 PM on, um, Monday, January the 11th.
Could someone resend that out, please, to me? Because for some reason I, I don't, I don't have it and I apologize for that.
That's, that's not for, for me or Ted or who is, that's not for us, right?
It will be for the, the representatives, yeah.
But I'm on that, am I?
Not me, okay.
Sorry, it was Tuesday the 12th, right? Or is it Monday, the 11th?
I have it in my calendar, Monday, January the 11th.
I wrote it down on the Tuesday, but I still don't remember if this is a meeting for me or just you, Ian and Susanna.
Could we get clarification on that?
James Warren sent out the, or James Warren staff sent out the invite, the Zoom invite just before Christmas Day, I think.
I remember seeing it.
And I don't remember seeing it. Which is why I didn't know about it. So maybe we could get.
Okay, I can sort that out.
Thank you. Maybe it just wasn't sent to me. Am I on that committee still, Ian?
There's no, nothing has changed on that. We're just, we're discussing committee membership next, right? Just to make sure that we're confirming things the way we all want it. So let's, 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 let's move to that and, and then we can confirm it up. Or, lost my video. Is that good then? Can we move on from this, this item on the strategic planning session and, and now we can talk about? Where are we next here? CV, conversion process, yes, unfinished business. Ubid CVRD conversion process, verbal status report to be given. I think we just started that process. And then just to confirm who, which trustees are representing us on that board. Gary, do you want to start? Do you want?
More.
How do you want to do it?
Three things that really, I just wanted to bring the, the board up to speed on, uh, on the conversion process. Obviously, we've had Christmas and New Years in between. But three things really, I just want to bring to your attention. The first one, we've talked about, the meeting of the conversion working group. As I say, I have it in my calendar, um, for January, the 11th, 3:00 to 4:00 PM. I will, trustee Kelcher, I'll, I'll confirm with James Warren that that is in fact the day and time. And who did he send that out to? So we'll sort that out. Second thing I want to just advise you of in terms of the conversion process is you'll see on, later on in the agenda, moving into in camera to discuss, uh, a couple of applications that we've received from members of the public to sit on that working group. There has been some discussion by the board, I understand, about, uh, potentially adding a member of the public or two to the, to the working group. So that, that, that I would recommend be, be discussed in camera. But, uh, one thing I, I think we just need to confirm here is, um, from the board's, uh, perspective, in terms of board members, uh, my understanding is that certainly the chair is on this working group. And we just need to confirm, um, are there going to be, or is there another trustee who is representing the board that is on the working group? So I can advise James Warren. He's asked, he's asked me to confirm once we've made these, um, confirmation decisions.
So if I, if, if I can start here, um, because I've had some discussions around this. So the committee, uh, as it stands now, has two members of our board, which is myself and Susanna on it. And then, you know, up until now, that board has consisted of, I guess, is there three members from CVRD? Yeah, Dan Arbor, James Warren, and why am I forgetting the third name?
The electoral director?
Well, that's Dan Arbor.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, there's one more. It's just alluding me. You're, you're making the same faces as I am, Susanna. Trying to remember a name. And then we had Urban Systems on it and Urban Systems, their work is concluded and they, so they'll no longer be on it. Um, and then, you know, we, I, I think, you know, from a CVRD perspective, they were presuming that the group would consist of, of Ubid and CVRD and we raised the issue of perhaps having a, a landowner also on that committee. And I think as a board, we said that's a good idea. And so one of the thoughts that I had, and I, I'd love just to float this out there and I don't want there to be any, you know, there's, there's nothing here that says somebody's wanted, somebody's not wanted, right? This is about just a thought in that, you know, we, we kind of have three main parts of our, our, our improvement district where we've got the North Craig Derrick subdivision. We have Union Bay proper and we have the South uh, part of, of our, of our group. And, and I wanted to put it on the table to say, is there any merit to the idea of representing all three? Is there anything that comes that's much different about the three of them or does it matter? That doesn't matter. We just can constitute this from people no matter where they live. And what's started that for me was mostly trying to figure out how to represent central, the central component, the, the historical center of Union Bay a little, a little better. Because as of right now, I don't believe we have anybody representing them. So I, I, that's what I was thinking and I don't want to say, hey, you know, that means Susanna's out or Ian's out. You know, I just wanted to put it out there as a concept for discussion and see if, if, if it matters.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll, I'll start with Ted. I'm going left to right on my screen.
Well, I looked at, uh, two folks that, uh, put their names forward. And I have a problem with one because
Let, let, we don't want to talk about this now.
No, what I'm saying is, uh, we have to choose one of these individuals and, uh, we can discuss that later.
I'm just talking about this concept of geographical representation.
I don't think it really makes much difference geographically. Myself. We're all part of the Union Bay Improvement District at the time. Whether we're at the south end or at the north end or anywhere in between.
Okay. Eve?
Um, well, I hadn't thought of that before, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's kind of interesting. I feel like Union Bay is, I don't feel exactly like Ted at all. I feel like we're three separate entities, actually. The south where I live, most of the people here know nothing about, I have had so many discussions with people about what our parcel taxes are for that we even have a new water treatment plant because they just don't know. And, um, and I think that the northern, I'm just maybe my perception, the Craig Derrick area, they kind of feel like they wish they were part of Courtney. I don't, I don't know, but anyway. So I think it's a valid point you have. But unfortunately, there is no one on this board that represents central Union Bay. But we could solve that with another way. But anyway, I, I think it's, it's an interesting point that you make. I, I don't, but I don't want to kick anyone else off. You're talking about still only two board members being on this committee, right, Ian?
I think that's what we're talking about, but I, like, I, I wouldn't consider that set in stone. Would, Gary, do you think it's set in stone?
No, uh, not, not necessarily. Uh, the reason that, uh, I just like a little bit better clarification on it is when I had my discussion with James, he asked me to get back to him at some point in time in terms of moving forward now on the conversion, uh, process and the working group and the monthly meetings. Who does Ubid consider to be their representatives on the working group? So I, I just want to confirm, is it, is it, um, yourself, Mr. Chair and one additional trustee and who that may be? And is there going to be one or two members of the public? So I can get back to him.
Susanna, with respect to this idea of geographic representation, what's your view?
I think I've already expressed that, but I'll do it publicly. Um, I think creating regions and regional representation just adds to the already divisive tone that has been far too long in our community. That's my personal opinion. We all pay the same parcel taxes, the same water tolls. We're paying for the same one water treatment plant. We are all one community. That some people are ill-informed is not, is not the, you know, is not the issue. And it may well be that the landowner that is chosen to be on the board does come from an area currently represented. So, um, I just think it adds to the divisiveness, honestly. And, um, I, I very much want to stay on the board. To be honest, it has been a pleasure to work with a functional uh, group of people on some very important issues. And that has not been my experience on the board, unfortunately, for the previous years. So I, I'm very much not going to willingly step down. That's just my very personal feeling.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, too. From my perspective, and I, I, I'm not disagreeing to be disagreeable. I, I actually feel that bringing somebody from each area is more inclusive than divisive. It tries to pull people together. But that's just an opinion. And I have no facts to back that up. So, um, I just wanted to have that discussion. And, you know, I, I guess there's two, if we were to say, hey, we want to do this and what I, I think we've really said is, hey, Eve and I kind of think, yeah, that's a neat idea. And Ted and Suzanne are kind of going, not necessary. You know, there are other ways of getting there, right? It, I don't think we have to say the chair sits on this committee. You know, like we could discuss that, whether, you know, we would have two trustees other than the chair represented on this committee as well. And at one point in time, we did do that. It was Susanna and Rick Bitten that were representing Ubid on that committee and I didn't. But, uh, you know, so that's kind of just how I wanted to kick this debate off is to, did we want to do something a little bit more structured? Or do we just want to leave it to, um, you know, sort of at large, if you will? I got, here's another question. Ted, excuse me, Ted and Eve, you are not on this committee. Do you have a desire to be on this committee?
Yes, I have a desire to be on this committee.
Yes, I do. I would like to, I, I, you know, but, um, I don't want to kick anybody off to get there.
I won't go. You'll have to.
There you go.
You'll have to yank me out. But absolutely, you're right. I'd forgotten Rick was on the board. There was three of us. I very much would like Ian, I would want our chair to continue to be on the board. So having another trustee and a landowner is, the landowner was a suggestion, if I'm, if I remember correctly, a joint suggestion at our last meeting, Ian, which was an idea presented and agreed between CVRD and the, the other party that's on, been on these meetings is the, uh, provincial government.
Yeah, I forgot them and they, and they remain on it, yes.
And they remain on it. So, um, by all means, if Eve or Ted wish to join, I'm fully, fully support that as well as the landowner that we will discuss later. So uh, I had forgotten about there being, uh, both Rick and I on there. So absolutely, I'm in favor. Just don't try to make me leave.
Never, we will never do that. We'll never do that.
Oh, well, you did actually, but that's okay.
As a, just a thought, I, I think we can put too many people on this committee, too.
Right.
And, you know, right now, if CVRD has three on it, it, you know, it feels balanced for us to have three, although I could make a case for four, saying it's about us. So, but, you know, you also, the more people you put on a committee, the, you know, there's almost an inverse relationship to effectiveness, right?
Well, Ian, if I could just interrupt, when you're saying three on CVRD, two of them are staff. So Janice, for example, or Gary.
Well, we'll have, we have four already. You're right.
Yeah.
Because Gary is also on this committee.
Yeah. But I, not, they are important. However, since this is such a, well, anyway.
So we're going to have four members to their three already. If we don't, if, you know, if we were to add one, if we were to go as we had currently planned, which is two trustees and a member of the public. And then Gary would be a part of it, right? So, um, my sense would be that adding a fifth would be too much.
That's pretty unwieldy, yeah. Because we forgot the, the government is there as well. It's already.
You will be adding the members. So you're dropping the idea of the member of the public then?
Well, what I was saying is if we have Gary, Ian, Susanna right now and we add a member of the public, we have four. So adding a third trustee would be five.
Right, right, okay.
And that feels a little unwieldy to me, but I'd love to hear others' people's thoughts on that, too. It's almost like we almost have to have the whole board there.
Yeah, I, I agree, but too many is ineffective, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess, you know, here's, here's our options. If we were to agree that we're going to have two trustees on it, is that we have Ian and Susanna, Ian and somebody else, or two trustees and not Ian. And I, I think they're all workable. It's, you know, you know, um, and we have Gary there as well, right? But I'd, I'd like to, you know, and, you know, I, I, and Susanna, I, I want to, I need to say this again. I'm, I'm not doing this for any reason. For anything you've done, I've valued your inputs there and you do a great job there. This is not about you, right? It's more about this geographic thing for me and, and I, you know, I'd be willing to drop that just to say, hey, I don't want to cause upset just because of a a design point, if you will. So please don't take this personally, this discussion.
Firstly, I don't think it would be right not for you to be on it, Ian, I, because you're the chair and, uh, you have to keep, continue the chair. So you need to know what's going on in this committee. So, uh, you know, I'm willing to just say, forget it. So, you know, I'm willing to just say, forget it. I, I don't have to be on it. You said what I'd like to, and yeah, I would like to, but, you know, doesn't look feasible.
And Ted, you would only be on it short term, right? Unless you turned into a member of the public, but, you know, we'd already have one of those on the committee.
Well, I've been a, I guess, a member and lived here 53 years. I've seen all of this going on for many, many years. My feeling is that you're doing the best job you can under these circumstances. Susanna, the same for her. She's brought a lot of things forward that need to be addressed. I wouldn't mind being on it and to be able to support you and Susanna as well to try to get the smoothest transition we can and to get the things that everybody in Union Bay wants to have happen.
If we were to say that we can only have two trustees on it, how would you go about that?
Well, is that necessary?
Well, I think.
Where did that ruling happen?
What we're saying is if we put three on, we would either have an unwieldy number or we would have to leave the member of the public out.
Well, I don't think, I can't see an unwieldy number because I think we're all on the same page. We all want the best we can possibly have for Union Bay. So I think we're, we're all on the same page here.
I'm just thinking about, we, we covered in the, in the meetings that we did have, which was about counting the ministry, counting all the CVRD staff, counting the three of us, because Rick was on there too, and the staff, which was Janice. It was a very large group and we, we did.
I wasn't officially on when Rick was, sorry to interrupt, but I wasn't officially on when Rick was on. He took my place. Like, it went from.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I attended some meetings, I, I think because somebody else couldn't attend or something like that.
At any rate, my point still stands, which is as large a group it was, and it was, we, we did manage to get a lot of work done and get it done in a very expedient, efficient manner because people were prepared. They only spoke about what they needed to speak about. I mean, I didn't find it unwieldy at all. And again, we're, we're forgetting the ge, in terms of geographic concern, that the landowner that we may appoint, in fact, may well be from a geographic area that is not currently represented. So.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
And we can debate, discuss it. But I move that the representation from the Ubid Board on the, the conversion working committee remain unchanged and that the membership be, or the pointies be myself and Susanna. Just for status quo.
I'll second.
Does anybody, and, and we can vote for again, so we can have just any further discussion on it, but I just wanted to try to, it's a trial balloon closure. Ted, do you, I, I'm, I, I know I'm excluding you and Eve, I know I'm excluding you doing that. I'm, I'm just.
No, I don't consider it an exclusion. My feeling is that you and Susanna represent the rest of us as well. And, uh, I stand behind both of you in these discussions. How's that?
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Eve, anything further?
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm ready to vote if we have to.
Okay. Susanna?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor? Ted?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Eve?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ian, aye. Okay, so that we will remain unchanged and we'll discuss the member of the public in the in-camera portion. And nothing else there, right? Okay, so item B on unfinished business, Upper Island Developments rezoning application to the CVRD. Update from Gary.
Mr. Chairman, thanks very much. I'll be very brief on this one. You'll remember that, I guess it was the beginning of December, I brought a report with two land development referral applications or comment from Ubid. One was from Upper Island Developments, the other was from Union Bay Estates. And with respect to the Upper Island Developments, we didn't have a report or some comments from, um, our engineering consultant. He felt at the time, couple of reasons, he had a lot of other issues on his plate and was only able to provide a report on, on Union Bay Estates. But the other reason was he felt he didn't have sufficient updated information on the details of the rezoning application for Upper Island Developments. Uh, I talked to him before Christmas. He assured me that he was in a position now to obtain those materials from the Upper Island Developments consultant. And he's working on a short report, similar to what he did for, um, Union Bay Estates. And I am projecting to have this on the board meeting agenda for discussion on the 21st. And I should have those comments from him. I'm going to check in with him tomorrow just to ensure that he's on track. And I have notified the CVRD that comments are coming. They seem fine with that. I think their intention is to bring a rezoning bylaw forward in the first quarter of this year and refer it to a public hearing. So their, their planner's been advised and he's comfortable with that timeframe. So I'm going to be proposing to bring something forward on January 21st. It'll be the same, um, it'll be the same rezoning application, but it'll have a companion report from our engineering consultant. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Questions, comments, Ted?
No, that's fine. That sounds like it's coming along.
Eve?
No, thanks.
Okay, Susanna?
Nope, that's great. And I really appreciate Gary, the thoroughness with regards to these subdivision applications. I really do, thank you.
Okay, let's close that one then and move on to item 5C, which is terms of reference for Ubid Board standing in select committees. And once again, over to Gary, because he is the author of the pages that are in your package. There's a four-page terms of reference that are included in the package.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You've seen this before. This was in the agenda package for December, I believe, but, um, we, we didn't get to it with other priorities on the agenda. And this is something you asked for, I think, in the fall. And Janice asked me to put something together. You know, you, you already have at this point in time in your meetings policy and in the Local Government Act, there's regulation, there's, there's regulations and stipulations with respect to standing in select committees. But, um, I think there was a desire, I was told, to perhaps get something a little bit more formal, just in terms of terms of reference for standing in select committees. First thing I'm going to say is that maybe events have overtaken this a little bit in the sense that, um, there's been a vote to proceed with conversion. And, um, there may not be a Ubid, uh, in the second half of this year. So to what extent are we going to need terms of reference for standing in select committees? Particularly standing committees, fire and public works, given the, you know, uh, what, what's potentially going to happen with conversion? Select committees, that's a different matter perhaps, because these are more one-shot deals, ad-hoc, special projects, hey, establish a little committee to, to work on this particular project and bring a report back to the board. But what I've done is I've created some terms of reference. I'm not going to go through them line by line, but there's a, a few, few new things that I put in here, and they're just suggestions on my part for you to consider. This is not, I don't consider this to be particularly time sensitive, that we have to get direction on all of this tonight. But it's our first time to sort of talk about it. I'll just hit the real brief highlights of what I've, what I've prepared. I'm making the suggestion that for standing in select committees, and again, keep in, keep in mind my previous remarks on, you know, on standing committees and are in fact, we're going to have them. But I'm suggesting that in terms of a composition, they have only a maximum of five members, including the chair, a second member of the board, up to three members of the public, and then a, a member of staff who'd be not a member of the committee, but would be a liaison to that particular committee. Think, think a, a select committee for the acquisition of a, a fire apparatus, for example. What I'm suggesting, it'd have the chair on it, a second member of the, of the board, up to three members of the public, up to, and, um, you know, the liaison would be the fire chief. In section four, I'm making the suggestion that in terms of reporting protocol, and this is where, um, there wasn't a lot of direction in, in the Local Government Act or in your meetings policy on this, but I'm saying in terms of reporting protocol, these, these, these committees need to be established formally by the board and approved by the board. And, um, you know, direct, in other words, member, trustees or members of the public just can't unilaterally go and establish one of these committees without formal approval from the board. And directions, you know, direct approaches to, to Ubid staff or other external agencies by members of the committee should go through the chair of the committee or through the acting administrator. In number five, I'm making the suggestion that standing committees, if we in fact are going to continue to have them, be held a minimum of once per quarter. I'm suggesting January, April, July, and October on, on dates approved by the board. In terms of select committees, because these are one-shot ad hoc committees with, which have a shorter life, I'm suggesting that meetings be held as determined initially by the board and then as delegated by the, uh, the committee chair. Agendas, I, I always suggest that it's good to have an agenda for standing in select committees and that the agendas be prepared, similar kind of format to what you're doing now and be available to members of the standing in select committees five days prior. And then finally, number 10, I'm suggesting that all members, all meetings of standing in select committees be open to the public, except where the committee is going to deal with, you know, an in-camera matter. And then, then, you know, your usual procedures and policies with respect to conflict of interest and, um, in-camera personal information would apply to the, to the standing in select committee. So this is really just for your consideration. If it's to be adopted, it would be form another kind of a policy document for you just to add a little bit more robustness in terms of what you have in place for standing in select committees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
You're muted.
I am, sorry, I'm talking and I am muted. I didn't want to make water drinking noises. Ted, any comments or?
No, there's no comments regarding, uh, what's been said here. I, my feeling is, uh, you know, regarding the standing committee that I am for being with in the fire department, a lot of the legwork and a lot of everything has already been done by the fire chiefs and by one other member of the public, uh, who's very knowledgeable. And, uh, my part is really very simple. They've done pretty well, all the footwork that's necessary. Is that?
Thank you. Eve?
I, uh, I'm not sure. I, I, the terms of reference are, are great. That's, you know, I think they're quite, um, comprehensive. I, I'm just not sure whether Ubid is going to have to have the standing fire and water committee.
I think it's a valid point.
Thank you.
Susanna?
Um, yeah, I agree with what, uh, first of all, thank you. I, I do appreciate the explicitness of the description of the two committees and how they are different. I also think we may, it may be a moot point to have a standing committee. A select committee has already been put in place for the fire, if I'm correct. And we did appoint one trustee who is now gone for the public works standing committee. I don't know whether we need to fill that role just as sort of almost a formality. But, um, I, 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 I think right now, on top of how quickly things are moving along, that it's, that if, you know, that we, that this is something that belonged to Union Bay in the past and it may not be a work, workable way, uh, forward, having.
Yep. I, I have a couple just technical comments on, on the document. One would be in sections, in section three, the, a maximum of five members and then the bullet points list up to six. So there's, you know, just some clarity that might, you know, just in wording as to, you know, I understand that it says up to three members of the public. So just maybe just some clarification as to how that might work. But I, you know, I prove it in principle. And then in number six, it discusses the notices of meetings for standing committees, but not for select committees. And so perhaps there's something that is needed there just to say, you know, for example, select committee, notices of select committee meetings must be posted a minimum of seven days in advance or something like that. But I, you know, with those two changes, I would be, first off, in favor of a motion which would approve adopting these as a policy of, of Ubid. And then the second thing that I would propose as a motion is that we suspend all standing committees pending conversion.
So move, I, I would.
Yeah, so we can talk about those two. And, and Ted, for clarification, the, the committee that is going on that you're a part of would be referred to as a select committee because it's for a specific purpose for the fire engine?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that, that would, that committee would be our only open committee at the time or active committee at, at present.
That's correct.
So, um, show, so shall we, you know, make, make a motion first off to adopt these with, you know, just with whatever clarification that Gary can add to number three and number six with respect to those two points? And we can, and then confirm that at the board meeting when we vote. So the motion would be to adopt these, uh, these terms of reference with appropriate adjustments to section three and six. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on it or shall we just vote?
Let's vote.
Ted?
I'm in favor.
Eve?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ian, aye. And then second motion would be, um, motion to suspend, uh, currently active standing committees pending conversion to CVRD and appropriate decisions made by that body.
Back into motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, votes then, Ted?
Favor.
Eve?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ian, aye. Okay.
Woo-hoo!
Through that. Okay, so that is, um, largely the public portion. We need to cease recording, have a motion to go in camera and cease recording and then we'll come back to the public portion and rise and report from the results of our in-camera session. So can I have a motion to adjourn to in-camera?
Motion made.
Second?
Sorry.
All in favor, we'll just do raise of hands and we'll show it on the video.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Gary wants to say something. Oh, sorry, Gary wants to say something?
Gary, you're muted. You're muted.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. There was one item under the conversion status update. The, the matter of the going down to two, three trustees.
Oh, yes, we missed one, didn't we?
The election?
Yeah.
Because the, I, I think I'd be warranted that the, the Board be brought up to speed where we're at on that and have a motion.
Yes, we should do that. Thank you for catching me. So we, we have a bit of a dilemma with respect to board composition coming up. It starts with the resignation of Trustee France so that we have an open position, which you know, should address or rightly should be addressed with a by-election. And then in April, Trustee Haroldson's term expires, which would then rightly be addressed by an election. Yet with conversion, the expected, the life expectancy of Ubid is approximately two months beyond that, right? Into July 1st. And so it seems like a unnecessary expense to the, the tax, the, the landowners for us to spend $6,000 on an election for two months. So I approached the Ministry and said, what are our options? Can we just, can, can we make a motion to not hold an election? And the answer to that was no, we can't do that. And the suggestion that was made by the Ministry was that we alter our letter's patent effective our next AGM to reduce the required number of directors to three. And that would negate the need for an election because we would have a slate of three, and we would not have quorum issues by just not having an election, right? So a quorum would then be two. So that is the propos, that, that is the background. And then I can have a, let's just open up for discussion. I have a motion written up that I can can read to you once I go find it. But I'd love to hear from Ted, Eve, Susanna. Ted, you can start with it and what your thoughts are on the approach of amending letters patent to three.
Okay, instead of, and I'm going to say, Mr. Chair, instead of going through all of this letters patent and everything else, with two months to go from April to July, if I stayed on two more months, would that alleviate the problem?
I think we run into the same issue, which is by our letters patent, your term has expired, and it would require some government motion or some authorization from the Ministry to extend your term. And when I'd gone to them about those types of actions, this was their proposal. They have to, they're, they're doing some work for orders in Cabinet anyways for conversion, like there's a whole process they have to go through, which involves the letters patent. So making this small or this change at that time is a very small incremental piece of work to be added into it. It just, we need to make our decision quickly so they can get the process moving.
Okay.
It's probably the simplest way to do it, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, it's whatever works, and I just don't want to see the Improvement District throw away money for another election when it's like two months, and then it could be the end of that point. It seems like a heck of a waste of money.
Hence the reason to do this. So Eve, any comments?
No, I'm, the letters patent change sounds like a great idea.
Susanna?
Um, yeah, I agree. The letters patent idea, if that's coming from the Ministry, then that certainly is the way to go. I'm just wondering, we haven't talked about the, the bylaw issue. Are, are we not expected to still have a bylaw, or did we not get permission to not, not have bylaws? Sorry, by-election?
Uh, it's you know, I think we're okay with scheduling a, I forget what our, our letters, or sorry, our, our election policy says about bylaws and how quickly we need to hold them.
By-elections? I think it's 60 days. Yeah.
That's our policy. We, we could vote to amend or suspend that by-election component. I believe.
I was under the understanding, Chair, that you had cleared the minister, that the Ministry said it would be okay that we not hold a by-election.
Actually, I didn't speak, that, I, I probably spoke too quickly on that or summarized it too far. I don't think I actually spoke about the by-election. I spoke about Trustee Haroldson's term.
Right.
And that was the decision on that. So point taken with respect to our election policy. We, maybe I'd ask Gary to say, what would your advice be on that? It's seeing that we're probably approaching the 60 days, we should make some motion that says we will alter that for, on a one-time basis.
Well, yeah, I mean, in effect, what the Ministry is doing is putting an order in Council forward to Cabinet to basically dissolve Union Bay. And an order in Council would supersede any policy that we would have about requiring to have an election. They're, they're aware of that policy. But it would, it would trump our policy. So any motion I would think that should be communicated to the Ministry, if that's, you know, if, if the Board is, is comfortable with that, would be essentially saying that, look, we concur with going down to three trustees upon the expiration of Counselor, of Trustee Haroldson's term, that we're not going to hold a by-election to fill Trustee France's vacancy, and we consent to only having three trustees as post-April, and that would be sort of concurrent with the AGM. But we should also include, I would think, in any motion that, you know, or something that words to the effect that notwithstanding our elections policy, we can, we can consent or agree with this approach that's recommended by the Ministry, which would be enacted through an order in Council, executive order, which would supersede our policy.
So in, in other words, we would not need to modify the policy? We would just say notwithstanding?
No, notwithstanding that policy in view of these circumstances, which would be outlined in the letter to the Ministry. And, and you know, this is an open meeting. We're being transparent about it, but you know, basically the rule is that any municipal council, regional district board, Union, you know, Improvement District Board can circumvent its own policies, you know? And certainly what the Ministry is proposing would trump our policy. But there should be a recognition that notwithstanding the requirement in our policy, because of the circumstances, this is the way we want with consent to going.
Okay, thoughts from other trustees? Does that satisfy, Susanna, was you were raised the issue, right? Does that satisfy what you were thinking?
Yes, it does, yeah. I, I, I hope Gary can write it up for us.
Gary, do you want to propose a motion for us?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, again, I can I'll, I'll just propose the motion right now. It's basically that you know, in view of the resignation of Trustee France and the ongoing conversion process, which would contemplate dissolution of Ubid as early as July 1st. The Board concurs with not holding a by-election and notwithstanding our policy on elections, the Board concurs with not holding a by-election to fill Trustee France's vacancy and would consent to having only three trustees post the expiration of Trustee Haroldson's term. And that, you know, that, that we consent that only three trustees are required at the end of April, and that this would be something that would be enacted at the AGM.
Right. And I think the only modification Catherine would ask us to make is if, instead of at the end of April, was effective April 22nd, the date of our AGM.
Right. Because I think that Catherine, if I'm reading her emails correctly, what she's trying to do is get this executive order order in Council to Cabinet before our AGM and before the expiration of Counselor, Trustee Haroldson's term. So this would be an AGM item. It would be on the AGM.
Right. And so what Catherine wants us to do is vote on the motion as presented by Gary. We will communicate it to her that we approved it in our COW meeting and that she will want to see have communication of the form, and she will work on that basis. And then she, we will communicate to her after our board meeting that the motion has been formally approved and, and that will finalize things for her.
So I'll second Gary's motion. The one he just read out.
Well, I think one of us has to move that. So I will move.
Oh, sorry.
So moved. Susanna seconds. Any further discussion on this one?
Oh, I think that's great.
Mr. Chair, all of course, in the draft minutes, all prepare the motion and it would be ratified. It would be ratified or subject to ratification on the 21st.
Fantastic.
Great.
Okay, so all in favor? Ted?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Eve?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ian, aye. Okay, thank you for pointing that out, Gary, and thank you for phrasing the motion. All right, so now we need a motion to temporarily go in camera.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So Janice, can you just stop on? So we are back from our in-camera and we re-adjourn, re-convene our public portion of this meeting, and we would like to rise and report from our discussion in the form of a motion. The motion is that the Board appoints Carol Mollstad as the Public Representative on the CBRD Conversion Advisory Working Committee. Second?
Second. Sorry, sorry, Mary.
Eve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that, let the record show that all trustees voted in favor of this appointment. All right. So I believe that that is the end of our agenda. Thank you, everybody, for some great work today. And I would like a motion to adjourn.
Can, can we just?
Sorry, sorry, we have something from.
Just, just a couple of housekeeping items following up, I guess, from this last motion. I will talk, I will phone from my end, I will phone Mr. Warren tomorrow to confirm the day and the time for the working group meeting, which I understand is Monday, 3 to 4, but I'll ensure that I advise him to send out the link to Susanna, yourself, and to Carol Mollstad. And Mr. Chair, the, the usual process that I, I see often think works best is if perhaps you would, would give Carol and the other applicant a, a call and just advise them of their appointment and, in Carol's case, advise her that more to follow. She's going to get an invite to the working group meeting on Monday.
Fantastic. I will do so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other items before we close?
Just a final thought about the working group. I know that there are times where not everyone can attend. I, I, I would like to propose, is it possible to have an, what's it called? If I were unable to attend, for example, that Eve or Ted could like an alternate? Is that just complicating things? Or I just really want to acknowledge Eve and Ted's interest in being on, on the committee.
Gary, what do you?
Would that not be?
I'll talk to James about it.
Okay.
I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Talk to James and see how, how that works for them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good idea. Okay, any other final comments? All right, can we have a motion to adjourn then?
I shall move.
All in favor?
In favor.
Yes, aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody, and we'll see some of you on Tuesday.
Happy New Year.
Monday, I guess it is, and we'll see the rest of you the week after.
Happy New Year.
Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye now.